Good evening and welcome to the Millbrae City Council Meeting of January 28, 2020. Can we have a roll call, please?
Four council members are present. Councilmember Oliva is excused.
Will you please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first on our agenda, we have a commendation for the Millbrae Community Foundation Student Volunteers. And we have some members from MCF. We have Maureen Davis, Kathy Quigg, Dennis Fama, Lynn Ferrario, Janet Fogarty. And we also have our student volunteers we would like to honor, Stella Balthazar and Samantha Lamb. Please join at the podium. Actually Kathy or Debbie Van Ward's here as well. Kathy or Maureen, would you like to make a say a few words?
Sure. The girls are here, they're there. Okay, great. So I'm Maureen Davis with the Millbrae Community Foundation. And these two young ladies helped us with our Holiday Stars this year. If you remember back to the Holiday Tree lighting, all those beautiful silver stars are painted as an acknowledgement and thank you for people who make a donation to the Community Foundation. And this year, we raised a little bit more than $10,000 with our efforts. So they were very instrumental in helping us do that. And we painted over 100 stars collectively. So thank you very much. The city's giving you a commendation and so are we.
We have a commendation from the city as well. So for Stella, congratulations. Do we ring the council up for a photo? Well, first, would you like to say a few words?
More pressure there.
Thank you for this opportunity. I really enjoy doing this and I hope to serve the Millbrae community in the future.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm very glad that I was able to help you guys with what talents I could offer.
Your volunteering and all of your help with the efforts. And, you know, we couldn't have done it without you. We thank the MCF for all the hard work you do and all the various projects that you helped to do fundraising for. So glad that it was a successful Holiday Tree fundraiser. And kind of a group photo, please. Guys want to look right here? Right here? I'll wait for it. One, two, three. And Maureen? Can you maybe say a few words about some of the projects that you have been fundraising for?
Sure. The Millbrae Community Foundation raises money to give out grants. And they can be hyper-local to an Eagle Scout that's doing a project, to more regional organizations that help with things like domestic violence and homelessness, to everything in between. We give scholarships to the high schools. We've given money to MCTV, to the Historical Society, to some of our schools with individual products, projects. So if you're interested in helping community foundation, fill the holes, the little gaps that make Millbrae better. Feel free to donate to us anytime. It's millbreafoundation.org for more information.
Wonderful, thank you, Maureen. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing, and we have our City Manager, Tom Williams.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Halliburton, Members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. Before I get into the agenda, I would just like to make a few announcements. We are going to have a very busy day here in the city of Millbrae this Saturday, February 1st. We have noticing in your purple folder and has gone out to the community of a Gateway at Millbrae Station development project, community meeting. This is a follow-up to the meeting that we had latter part of last year. We told the community, the neighborhood, that we would have monthly meetings, but due to the holidays, we did not have a meeting. And so this is a meeting to follow up. Construction, there's an item on the agenda later on tonight, has started for undergrounding and utility work. And this will bring the neighborhood and everyone up to date on expectations and scheduling. So that is at 9:00 a.m. out at the surface parking area on the east side of the BART parking garage. Also on February 1st at 10:00 a.m. is the Millbrae Recreation, Millbrae Rotary Club. They will be hosting a disc golf course demo day. Last year, as you may recall, the Millbrae Rotary Club and the city of Millbrae teamed up to analyze and appropriate space along the spur trail for a potential disc golf course. And with the help of veteran disc golf course designer, Mr. Leonard Muse, who is probably the country's foremost golf artist, he had an amazing presentation and neighborhood workshop. But before moving forward to perhaps finalize the locations, we'd like to invite all the local residents out and anybody that has an interest in participating and learning how to play and demoing what a disc golf course is. So again, that's at 10:00 a.m. It'll be, everyone will meet up at Mosta Grove Park, and it will go two hours until noon. Also, I'd like to announce the Millbrae Spring Art Show and Contest that's coming up. So if you're interested in entering the Millbrae Art Show and Contest, the Spring Art Show, it's open to adults, seniors, young adults, and school-aged children who live, work, or go to school here in Millbrae. The show will be held on March 27th and 28th in the Millbrae Community Center's David J. Chacootie Room. And for more details or to submit art entries, please see the announcement on our city's website, or you can contact the Recreation Department. We've also launched a new website to make it easier for accessing the city of Millbrae's homepage and information. The domain name is simply now www.ci.millbrae.ca.us. And so, no, excuse me, that's the old one. The new one is millbrae.com. See, that's what happens when I read. Cityofmillbrae.com. So cityofmillbrae.com is all you need to type now, and that will take you to our website, cityofmillbrae.com. And then lastly, I'd like to thank all of the volunteers for the Martin Luther King Day of Service. We had about 45 people that came out to transplant rosebushes and other shrubbery from the Recreation Center site to the community garden. So it was a fantastic day. We had teachers from Taylor Middle School Biology Teachers and students. Some of them were able to receive credit for community service, and it was, turned out to be a great day. So thank you to all the volunteers and everyone that participated.
Yes, Vice Mayor Schneider.
City Manager, did you mean for the meeting this Saturday at 9 o'clock for the Gateway Update, is it where the meeting was two months ago, which is at the end of Aviador as opposed to the surface parking lots at BART?
Correct. It's at the end of the, at Aviador, but just, just east of the parking lot. So it's on Aviador right of way, city of Millbrae right of way, but just east of the parking lot.
Sort of near the bollards.
Correct, that's right. And you'll see, we'll have a pop-up city of Millbrae tent, just like last time.
Thank you.
Moving on to the agenda, we have approval of the meeting minutes, item number three for January 14, 2020. There are no oral reports for city committee and commission chairs. After that, we'll take public comment. That's for anybody from the public that would like to address the council on any item that's not on the current agenda this evening. Then moving to the consent calendar, item number five is to consider adoption of a resolution waiving the competitive procurement process and authorizing a $900,000 contract for Giardelli for construction management, construction inspection services for the TOD-2 project at the BART station. This will be fully funded by the developer, not by the city. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the city manager, designated to execute, the Second Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement with New City America for work related to the continued formation of the Business Improvement District. Item number seven, the last item on the consent calendar, is to consider a resolution accepting the 2019 pavement management project as complete and filing that notice of completion. There are no public hearings this evening. Moving to existing business, we have three items. Item number eight under existing business is recommendation of artwork submitted by the Millbrae High School for Utility Box Paintings. This includes one submittal from Cappuccino and one submittal from Mills High School. Item number nine is to reaffirm the citywide position opposing Senate Bill 50 and authorize the submission of the mayor's opposition letter. Item number 10 is to receive information and update on the Millbrae Recreation Center Restoration Project. Moving under new business, there's two items. Item number 11, first item under new business is to consider adoption of the fiscal year 2019-20 Sister Cities Commission Work Plan. Item number 12 is to consider adoption for the 2019-20 Senior Advisory Committee's Work Plan. And after that, Mr. Mayor, we move to council comments. There's no closed session this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Lee?
Yes, thank you, City Manager. That was a good, thank you for the report. I have a question about the, the website. Is it also the emails too, or is it just the website? So is the email going to remain the same?
Emails will remain the same, yes.
Okay. And also, I just thank again staff for their work for the Lunar New Year festivities. It was well attended. I don't know, I'm speaking into the mic closer. Okay, so yeah, I just want to thank you and the staff. It was one of their biggest attended festivities in a while. So, and all had to do really with the partnership with the citizens and the city's support. Thanks again.
Thank you.
And City Manager Williams? I know there have been some concerns regarding the coronavirus and the flights from Wuhan, whether or not they're coming into SFO. Can you provide an update on that for the public?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I worked with Chief Kunkel yesterday. We've reached out to the managing director of SFO. And SFO is screening any flights coming in from China, working with the Center for Disease Control. There was a rumor that there was a flight coming in from Wuhan Province, which is the epicenter that's been reported for the virus. That was not correct. They are evacuating, the US is evacuating diplomats and US citizens. They're actually flying into Anchorage, Alaska, not into SFO. And that from Anchorage, Alaska, they'll be flying to Los Angeles. But the screening at the airport, according to the director of the airport, is a partnership with Center for Disease Control, and they seem to have it well managed and under control.
Great, thank you. All right, so next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from January 14, 2020. Can we have a roll call, please? Sorry, motion, please. Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Pappen and a second from Vice Mayor Schneider. Your votes, please.
The minutes passed with a vote of four to zero, with Councilmember Oliva excused.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is public communication. And this is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. Speakers that have up to three minutes. Do we have any speakers for public comment on anything not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, public communication is closed. So we will go on to the consent calendar, and we have three items, items five, six, and seven. We have a motion to approve?
I'd like to pull the TOD-2.
Number five?
Number five?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll remove item five from consent, and do we have a motion for items six and seven?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Lee, a second from Vice Mayor Schneider. Your votes, please.
Items number six and seven on the consent calendar passed with a vote of four to zero, with Councilmember Oliva excused.
Hey, Vice Mayor Schneider, question on item five?
I shared some of these concerns with the city manager. Given, given how BART has treated the BART station, I'm sure Giardelli is a good company. And I just didn't see, after reading the report, how would we be updated with what's going on there to make sure that everything is happening to Millbrae's advantage? In this case, and for the public, we're using a management company that's already been on our pre-approved list, so that's fine. They're already working with BART. And in one way, that's really good, because they know the project area. But on the other side, they're going to be working for us for a couple of years, but they'll be working for BART forever, or in theory, forever. So I just would like to know that there's a system, that we're hearing what's going on, and that they're actually working for us and not for BART, and that whatever changes are happening down there are in our favor. The other area that I have concern is when I read through the contract, it does talk about the demolition phase. And since we didn't get the reuse of trees into the developer agreement, we're trying to negotiate after the fact to recover those trees and move them. So for example, there's at least 15 really lovely magnolia trees that could be moved to the Monterey Park, which is completely a very hot, flat place. It could work perfectly, but it's only going to be out of the kindness of their heart if they will let us do that. And if we've got Giardelli, how does Giardelli know that at least there is an interest from Community Enhancement Committee, from myself, I don't know about the other council members, to try to save these trees and repurpose them in another neighborhood? So that's another one of my concerns. There was a discussion of periodic night work, which, when we went through the approvals of the TOD, we agreed not to have night work. Now, to me, depending on what part of the BART project happens at night, it's going to be away from housing. But if it's happening in that, in, I think it's 6A or 6B site, the one that's going to run right by High Line Canal, if they're doing night work there, and we've got residents right there, that we have precautions, and I know the city manager has an answer for me. Those are just, I just want to make sure that we are as transparent as possible. And finally, we do have a webpage specifically for the Gateway Project. If we can make sure that we're putting all of our announcements on that, so that the public can find everything they want to know about the Gateway Project right there. With that, I'm happy to vote for it, but I had concerns.
Okay, so in terms of the night work, this is something that we talked to the contractor about. We represented that to the neighborhood and felt that because of traffic congestion and sort of, that we would allow it as long as we don't get any complaints. So the first complaint that we receive, we will shut down the night work for the project. So this is going to be something that we will manage and make sure that it's not a nuisance. And then in terms of light, you know, glare from lighting, both if they do do night work. And I think the night work is going to be very infrequent. We didn't say, you know, it's going to be something that happens every day, only on occasion for work. Glare, dust, noise, we have a 16-foot-high screening that they have agreed to that will stretch down High Line Canal, that will provide some attenuation to the neighborhood to the north. And then the trees, we've been working with Republic Urban, and we've identified the magnolia trees, as well as a few other London plane trees that they have agreed to remove and put in root balls, and deliver them actually to our public workshop, so we can get them replanted. So we are working on that. Also, Councilmember Pappen has been addressing the same situation to us as well, to save as many of those trees as we can.
Thank you. And I understand, and for the public to understand, if there's some night work and it speeds up the total construction time, I see that as a win. So I'm not opposed to night work, it's just how well it's done. And did you hear anything from the palm trees, then? Who's taking ownership of the palm trees?
Keelym, our Public Works Director, now Acting Community Development Director, which I will inform the council of the reorganization interim very soon.
We are communicating with several tree companies in Gilroy and San Jose about possibly repurposing those trees and get some credit from them.
Okay. I also did get a couple of price quotes for them. So there's a range. I don't know if I want to put it out there, but it's a pretty good range if we can take ownership of those and sell them.
Definitely. If you could talk to us separately, we'd appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up?
Yes, Councilwoman Pappen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm totally confused. I thought throughout the entire process, we were requiring the trees and foliage to be repurposed for us. So I don't know how that got left out of any agreements. I thought we talked about that for a long time. My concern, Mr. Williams, is the community meetings we've had thus far, BART is doing nothing about the existing noise in the parking garage. So what sort of, I mean, we have zero assurance, they're not, they're just going to make more noise. This is completely unacceptable. They're not taking responsibility for those plates that are disrupting the neighborhood right now. So I don't see how we're getting any, giving them any permits to do further noise if they don't take responsibility for the noise that exists now. The neighbors have been complaining for years, and they do nothing. They cleaned the station once, after six months, it's already dirty and disgusting. So what control do we have here? This is, they walk all over us, and I'm tired of it.
So if I may, there are two separate things. One is that we, as the private development project commences, we, as a city of Millbrae, do have control over the area of leased land and land that's being developed. We don't, as you, as you pointed out, there are still issues with the parking garage, the noise, and the cleanliness and safety of the BART station, that BART is responsible for management and managing. So I am actually meeting with the BART director this Thursday morning out at the site, out at the station, at 9:00 a.m. Couple of staff members will be joining me to continue with his listening tour and follow-up and what they can do to provide more attention to the Millbrae BART station. But there are two separate, kind of two separate projects, the existing BART station, but then the land development side that we, as the city of Millbrae, do have control over. So if there are nuisance issues, or if there are issues with not implementing the permit properly, we, the city of Millbrae, manage that process.
I understand this is a different contract, and I would hope the city of Millbrae pulls the environmental impact report, because basically, BART has underestimated their own development and their own circulation. We still haven't seen a circulation plan or a parking plan, and I don't know how things are able to go forward without those. So I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for your indulgence along these lines.
Mr. Mayor, if I may note, though, because I don't want any confusion with the public or anyone, that the building permits for the construction of the buildings are not, will not be issued without the parking management plan being approved by the city. So we are working with Republic Urban on the parking management plan. We'll be reviewing that, and they need to meet the satisfaction of the city in terms of the parking management plan before we can issue building permits. The grading permit and the demolition permit that were issued are pursuant to terms and definitions outlined in the development agreement.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I had some concerns about this as well when I saw it on the agenda, and, you know, who is Giardelli really working for? Are they working for BART? Are they working for the city? But it sounds like, really, we don't have any real liability here. And if there's any problem with any of the infrastructure, any of the work that gets done, it's on BART to fix it. And we're the ones that would be enforcing that. So let's go ahead and I have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from myself. Kind of your votes, please.
Item number five passed with a vote of four to zero, with Councilmember Oliva excused.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just for the public, so everyone knows and they see this amount, which is a large amount, this is fully funded by the applicant. There's no money coming out of the city. So it's 100% reimbursable.
Okay. And we had a request earlier from Councilman Lee to move up items 11 and 12 ahead of existing business, since we have the chairs of the Sister Cities and Senior Advisory Committee present here. Yes, Vice Mayor. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Do we, Culture Arts Committee, do we have the students who are part of the utility boxes here? So if we don't have students, we're not making them wait, then? It's just...
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead with item number 11, the Fiscal Year 1920 Sister Cities Commission Work Plan. And we have our Chair, Robert Gottschalk. Emperor, former mayor, and emperor for life, Gottschalk.
Well, hopefully it's going to go in one direction, that would be which?
It'll be this one, the right. Do you want to use the stationery or the handheld?
Let me use the handheld.
Okay.
Mayor Holliver, Vice Mayor Schneider, members of the City Council. I'm pleased to be able to be here tonight, representing the Millbrae Sister Cities Commission regarding the 2019-2020 work plan. And I'd like to draw your attention to the membership of the commission, particularly Mr. Tom Doughty, who's been on the commission for 25 years, and former Mayor Doris Morse for nearly 20. At the same time, out of the 11 members, we have five whose terms are set to expire in five months. Hopefully, we can retain each of those, and we'll make every effort to do that if we can. So with regard to last year, 1819, we did have a visit. A delegation from Honu, Japan, came to see us in October of 2018. Mayor Kawata and two of his city staff came to see us at the time of our Japanese cultural festival, and this was, in fact, the third time that Mayor Kawata has visited Millbrae. Then again, a delegation from Millbrae was blessed to be able to visit our sister city in Mosta, Malta, last April. There were 18 of us, who visited for about 20 days, had a wonderful trip, thanks to Council General Louis Vella, who did almost all of the organizing of the trip. We had an absolutely terrific time. The celebrations in Malta, particularly Mosta, of Good Friday and of Easter are just quite impressive. We had reserved seats right along the street of the parade, right across the street from the domed cathedral, from which we have the cornerstone, the cornice right outside the door here. It was fascinating, that and Easter Sunday as well. We visited Sicily, Mount Edna, the American Embassy, which is most fascinating, 7,000-year-old ruins, and got to meet outgoing President of Malta, Ms. Perica. And then, once again, five of us were quite fortunate to be invited to go to our friendship city, Honu, in November of this year, to help them celebrate their 65th anniversary as a city. We had a terrific visit, once again. We joined forces with sister city representatives from Belgium and from the Philippines, and got to see Mount Fuji, Tokyo. And it was a brief visit, but it was extremely enjoyed by all of us, and we look forward to further contact. Now, with regard to going forward to the 1920 work plan, the first three items are fairly straightforward, but I will draw your attention to task four, in which we want to revive and bring back to life the relationship we've had for many years with La Serena, Chile. It's been quite dormant, the contact that we had down there, the mayor has left her post, and we've made several efforts to contact the new Council General here in San Francisco, to see if he will come and visit us at the commission meetings, and see if there's a prospect of organizing a visit to La Serena one day soon. And then, of course, we have, as a commission recommended to the City Council, to arrange for a friendship city arrangement with Dongguang, China. And we want to have communications and thoughts and discussions of visits in both directions, and we look forward to doing that, hopefully, as time goes forward. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Chair Gottschalk. Yes, Vice Mayor Schneider.
This is one of the, I don't know where this fits. First of all, having gone on both of those trips, they were both amazing, and it was a great time. It was a, and for the public to know, all of us paid our own way, so there, no city funds were used in there. But a couple of things came up in the context of doing, basically, international diplomacy. And one of those is the city gifts. I had the pleasure of going with Commissioner Kathleen Kumora and former Mayor Doris Morse to a sister city lecture down in Menlo Park, and met, Silicon Valley actually has an office of protocol. Now, this was after the flag-raising event here in Millbrae, and it was also where a lot of the gifts that we have to give to other countries are actually made, not in the United States. So I don't know if staff can do this, or if sister cities, in their unofficial protocol hat, would look into some kind of policy about where we get our gifts. So I mean, the bags for Japan, I actually spent time taking out the labels from where the bags were maintained. And then the officer of protocol, who used to work for the US State Department, she talks about visits to China, where the very gifts that we're giving to China are made in China, not in Millbrae necessarily, but other places. So when we're dealing in this realm of international diplomacy, there's some pieces I think we should get. So I don't know if this is your work plan, or if staff wants to do it, but the Officer of Diplomacy of Silicon Valley offered to help us with both a free speech area, so that that will help us with any future flag events, and help us know how to use the three flagpoles out there. It would also help us figure out where we get our gifts, and that we kind of have some step on it, because it took quite a bit of time behind the scenes of how do we get gifts, and what kind of gifts, and how many people on there. And I'd just like to throw that out there as something else. I think Sister City Committee, with your membership, your current membership, are well-equipped to do the research and bring it back to us.
I fully agree, and thanks go to staff for the, all the work that went into providing those gifts for us on both occasions, and it was a big hit and very much appreciated. Among the other protocols that we need to work on are these questions you've raised. I appreciate that, and we'll certainly hope to put that in a formal sense and commit it to writing and carry it out.
And I would only add that, right now, there's some really good-priced plane tickets to Chile. It's on my list to go to, so I'm looking forward to reestablishing. Oh, the other protocol that Kathleen mentioned to me is, for city events, the dignitaries that we should automatically remember to invite. So the reorganization, we should be inviting the diplomats from the various communities. And we need to get it on our timeline, because we need to give the Council General of Japan, you know, a good amount of warning for that. So even building that into the timeline would be a great asset.
You're absolutely right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we have, actually, a speaker slip on this item. We have Ed Musa.
Hi, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me up here. I want to, thank you for the opportunity to speak about my birthplace, Ramallah. We would love to have Ramallah become a sister city with Millbrae. Mayor Wainley, at the time, sent a letter to Mayor of Ramallah, and Ramallah responded with a letter of well wishes, and hoping that something like that will happen. Let me explain what Ramallah is and where it is. Ramallah, Ram means hill, high side, and Allah means god, so it's like the highest point to god. Ramallah is pretty typical to Millbrae. It's hilly, fairly close to the coast, and warm, you know, probably like Millbrae, for the most part. Ramallah is generally considered the most affluent and cultural, as well as the most liberal of all Palestinian cities. It's home to a number of poets, artists, musicians, and several colleges and universities. Ramallah, like Millbrae, has a strong Boy Scout and Girl Scout organization. As you were talking about the Easter in Malta, Ramallah has a wonderful... Sorry. Ramallah has a wonderful Easter Palm Sunday event over there, where the Boy Scouts would march through the city of Ramallah, celebrating Palm Sunday, which is pretty much the holiest day, one of the holiest days out there. And just a big, grand event. When we were little boys, little kids, I was a little boy, we used to have palms that... That's all right. So we would have the palms that were made by our parents and grandparents, and we would put flowers in them. As little kids, we would all get dressed up really, really nice, and we would hold the palms, you know, go to church and come out, and it was just a beautiful, beautiful event. And again, this is the reason I love Ramallah, and this is the reason I love Millbrae. And I think the two of them together are wonderful. Right now, we have probably 50 families living in Millbrae from Ramallah. So it's quite a few. I've been living here since '75. Went to Taylor &amp; Mills. My kids went to Spring Valley Taylor &amp; Mills. So, any questions or...
Any questions from the council? Councilman Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Musa, for your presentation. Yes, I, as, when I was mayor last year, towards the end of my term, I, Mr. Musa explained to me the rich heritage that exists in Millbrae and around the Bay Area, Ramalites, and that's Ramalites, not Ramalins. And so I wrote a letter expressing an interest in some sort of relationship with Ramallah. And they responded quickly, said they're very interested in forming a friendship city or sister city of some sort, which is incredibly, I think it was an honor for Millbrae. So I hope that we do pursue this in some way. And I explained to Mr. Musa that for any sister city or friendship city relationship to be successful, it has to have a champion and a sponsor. It can't be, the city can't, can't, doesn't have the resources or the authority to sponsor such an event. So he, and the many Ramalites in Millbrae, have enthusiastically embraced that idea.
Wonderful, you know, thank you for the presentation. We can't really, you know, it's not really a back-and-forth type of...
Thank you.
...thing, but I would recommend maybe attending the next Sister Cities Commission, and speaking, and introducing yourself to them, and see if the process can begin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, just as an update, because we've been working with Mr. Musa and the letter, and I need to brief you on it, but we do have this scheduled for staff presentation on Monday, February 24th, at the Sister Cities Commission, for introduction and review. So we'll be on the agenda for discussion.
Okay. Oh, yes, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Excellent. I look forward to seeing that. The other thing I learned at that Sister City conference was, some cities and their sister city commissions do fundraise, and it's not to send elected officials to that country necessarily, it's to, when they visit here, that you've got money to take dignitaries to various events and things like that. So I think we restructured, before I came on board council, how our various committees and commissions could or couldn't fundraise, but just throwing that out there as an idea that other sisters, other cities allow their sister cities to fundraise.
Ramallah, we have, I can still keep going. We have an organization, it's called the Ramallah Club, for international in San Francisco. We have a convention, AKA reunion. We would have 1,500 people come to this reunion. We've had it here in Burlingame a couple of times, in San Francisco a few times, and all around the country. Every single year, we have one. We've had it back in Ramallah twice, very, very successful, as you would imagine. So it's, we have quite a few people that are definitely wanting to have it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a, oh, yes, Chair Gottschalk.
In response to Vice Mayor Schneider, prior to the arrival of Mr. Williams, we were instructed by the city manager that we were no longer allowed to do any fundraising. We have some money in the bank, we have plenty of needs that we believe we have to foresee, to properly use that money. We would love to have the opportunity to get back in active fundraising mode, and I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, there was, the commission used to fundraise, and then was advised that they're not, no longer allowed to fundraise, so, again, I think they would appreciate that opportunity, but it's a legal question, I think, at this point.
Somehow, the city of Menlo Park has worked it out.
We can look into that.
Yeah, I think there's reasons, because they probably have a nonprofit to go through, because you can't intermingle private...
Yeah, it's no, it's no longer under the city's bank.
It shows up on the audit, and then we get ding for it.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion from Vice Mayor Schneider, and a second from Councilman Lee. Your votes, please.
Item number 11, passed with a vote of four to zero, with Councilmember Oliva excused.
Okay. Next on the agenda is item 12, which is the adoption of the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Senior Advisory Committee Work Plan. And we have our Chair, Marlene McBride, and Rochelle Mullen as well.
Marlene. I will. So, so, just use the arrows, is to go forward, is to go backward, to just let them write? It might be easier if you use the handheld.
It's with great pleasure that we come as a senior advisory committee. My name is Marlene McBride, but before, I want to honor our council, and our mayor, and our council, and also our staff. My name is Marlene McBride, and my good friend is?
I'm Rochelle Mullen.
And we'll go through the senior advisory committee, and I want to stress to you that this report is one that is from June 2018 to June 2019. And the people that are on our committee are myself, Mary Ellen Pellegrini, Mimi Lee, Rochelle Mullen, Mimi Lynn, Ann Jones, and Patrick Cheng. We are funded, again, as I mentioned, from June 18, 2018 to 2019. And I want to go through this, because so many times, we miss this, so we'll go through each one. We funded the expansion of the Self-Help for the Elderly Lounge Program, and conducted language lessons for them. We participated in a joint meeting with the Youth Advisory Committee. We provided program recommendations and support to the recreational staff, resulting a senior lounge program, and the senior scam presentation endorsement. We participated in the Millbrae Recreational Center rebuilding advisory committee meetings, and provided input from the senior residents. We did have a lot of input from the seniors at this point. We participated in city events, and received information from various senior organizations. The next thing we have is our 2019-2020 work plan. Our task one, and I do want to go through these, because some of these will be updated. Task one, advisory body to the City Council, as an ongoing activity, serve as a recommended body for matters as defined in the Resolution 1637. And 1637 gives us guidelines as to what the senior advisory committee should be doing, and it's excellently planned out, so we know what to do. Task two, programs and fees, as an ongoing activity, review and make recommendations to the Parks and Recreational Commission... to the parks and recreational commission for review by the city council for parks and recreation operations, programming and fees for the services. And we, by the way, have many programs that are on our senior line, and I'll show that to you in a moment. Task three, build relationships with local senior organizations. Connect with local senior organizations to build relationships and increase communication and outreach within the senior community. Task four, we have a lot of things going, senior programming support. We provide assistance and support to current senior programs and events. And it's important at this point that we be aware of our senior line. The senior line is, each one of you has one, and is always available at our recreational center, and it has all of the activities that we participate in. And there's a tax, I mean, if you're interested in having your taxes gone over, you can look into the senior line. One of our members, Ann Jones, found out that there was an interest in having a detailed calendar for each month, oh, for each month, so we need to be aware of this. And so many people look at it daily, and they say, this is what I can do on that day. So that's something that we're doing, continuing. And task five, senior resources and information. Seek out senior resources, collect information, and share with the senior community. And what we are doing is we have an individual area for the seniors. It's a bulletin for all the senior activities at the Rick Center, and also we have a rec with all of the resources that are available. Now, the best part is to hear what we are doing still, or what we've done with Rochelle. Thank you, Marlene. We have, I'm just giving you some specific items that we would like to provide the following examples of how our committee continues to achieve our stated tasks. Just note that this is just a sampling. In the area of presentations at our monthly meetings are on the following. We had a
Sorry, can you hold the microphone closer?
Excuse me. We had a representative from Group Four Architecture on an update on the Community Center project. We also had a presentation from Hip Housing, which was regarding home sharing, which is important for a lot of seniors who may be living alone and would like to have, earn some extra money and provide housing for other individuals. We also had a presentation from Colette Vacations regarding senior trip opportunities. And we also had a presentation by Jean Perry, providing us surveys of adult and aging populations. The deadline that, for submission of these surveys, was December 31st of 2019, but because of the appeal, Millbrae extended the submission to have the submissions of these surveys from, to January 21st. In one of our tasks, it had to do with participating in the city information. So our committee members are participating members to provide input on senior matters and to keep our committee in touch with ongoing city concerns. In that area, we had a representative of our commission as part of the Community Center building project, and we all, Marlene usually goes to the Mayor's Civic Coordinating Council, providing information on what's going on with our senior area, and also finding out what other areas in the city that might impact our concerns. And also in area of providing support to seniors, in the area of the senior birthday lunches, we offered a suggestion to honor our veterans at the November lunch, and that seemed to go over well. And we also provided volunteer assistance at the January health fair. We also have off-site meetings with Cadence Senior Living and Magnolia Senior Living, this way offering updates on what might be available to seniors who need that sort of services. Thank you. And they have spoiled us. We've had breakfasts, lunches, and dinners, and it's nice to be a senior, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you very much. And I know, Marlene, you've done a lot of, you've helped quite a bit with the Recreation Center planning, and hope as we go through the next phase of the project, which hopefully will be very quickly, we keep you engaged in that and make sure that we have great input from our senior community. Any questions or comments? Yes, Vice Mayor Schneider?
And Chief Kunkel, this might be also for you. I had the pleasure of filling in for Councilwoman Oliva at the senior commission meeting last week, and it's always a pleasure to be with you. For any of you who have older family members, they have both the monthly luncheon, well, the monthly luncheon is really great, and my folks started going, my dad made new friends. And for all of us who have elderly parents, you have to constantly be rebuilding your friendships. So it's, it was very important, and Mom and I are very thankful. I went to the last luncheon last week, or the week before, and they had more people coming, so that was exciting. It was a growing group on there. So please, look, reach out to that, and it's at the Magnolia, it's really quite lovely, and they have a great bingo game, set of bingo games. My question for you, Chief, is, two years ago, I went out with Peninsula volunteers who managed the Meals on Wheels program, and the Meals on Wheels program had just expanded into Millbrae. Before that, we were handled by some other government entity. And with my emergency services hat and the fact that we are trying to find people who are homebound, and it's not only seniors, it can be people with disabilities, but trying to identify them for our evacuation plans, how can we make sure that all the various parts of Millbrae are working with each other? And I, usually, I didn't get an invitation from Meals on Wheels, maybe I didn't serve correctly two years ago, but I hopefully will go out with them. At the time, all of the volunteers from Millbrae's Meals on Wheels came from Redwood City. So if you've got some free time, I'm sure Meals on Wheels, who take special, the calories are exactly intended for seniors for lunch and dinner, and they bring these pre-made meals to your home, they also conduct a wellness check at the time, they can provide sometimes the only human contact that some of our homebound people are getting. But how can we become more involved in that and help us with evac plans?
As far as our evac plan, that's a difficult one. I know PG&E is working on that. What we run into repeatedly is, it's hard to maintain the database, determine who maintains it, and there's significant privacy issues. So I like that idea as well. We broached that when I was the director of OES, but it's a very difficult, complicated matter to solve, and I think we're still working on it, but we have not slain the dragon yet. But the Office of Emergency Services, I know, is working on it. And as far as helping Meals on Wheels, we'd be more than happy to help.
No, that wasn't for you.
Okay, good.
How do we get all the, the city has so many moving pieces, how can we keep them all moving together?
I think this might be, this could be a good, if I may, Mayor, good discussion for the upcoming
It is if the senior commission looks into, you know
Be aware of the survey that's going out. That survey is asking people what their needs are, and if people fill out that survey, I think it's Christina on that form, and you can let her know what you're doing, and that's one reason. And also, SARS luncheons, the luncheons that we have on the second Wednesday of the month are at the Magnolia. But we also have the Self Help for the Elderly, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
Very good.
And those are at 10:30. Thank you.
Chief, we're going to sign you up for helping with the Meals on Wheels next week. You don't have enough to do.
Well, I actually think they invite all elected officials to go do a day of learning how it's done. You go down and see where the meals are prepped, and then you come, I delivered with the executive director, and it was a real learning experience. It was very valuable.
Okay.
And it happens in March.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Councilwoman Pappin. Your votes, please.
Item number 12 passed with a vote of four to zero with Councilmember Oliva excused.
All right. Next on the agenda, we will go back to existing business. Item number eight, recommendations of artwork submitted by Millbrae High Schools for utility And we have Debbie Van Wort, the chair of the, no, not the chair, from the Cultural Arts Committee. Okay. And Pam Foss, the chair of the Cultural Arts Committee.
Barbara Whiteley, and Pam is unable to make it, so here I am, taking her place. I am a member of the commission with Debbie, and there are four of us, and we have a project that we've been working on with the utility box, a box bringing art to Millbrae. We want to beautify the city. So I just wanted to go over briefly what we've been doing, and I'll make it quick. The next slide. So a little background, a little timeline, and also the site locations and design recommendations.
[inaudible]
Okay. Excellent. Okay, so the background is, in January of 2017, we reconvened and started coming up with different projects for our committee. The LEOS helped us, they surveyed, we decided on beautifying the utility boxes. So the LEOS surveyed and catalogued all the utility boxes in Millbrae. We also did a pilot program for the painting of the utility boxes. Then the committee members reached out to the art teachers of the Millbrae schools to determine if there was any interest in students submitting their artwork to us. The deadline for the proposals was on February 20th last year. Two utility boxes have been completed, and we have three more that need to be painted in 2020. So why are we doing it? I mean, basically, for community art, bringing the community together, getting the community engaged, and for beautifying the city. So in Mills High School, where the next box that we're going to be doing is located at the south end of the farmer's market parking lot, and the student who won is Catherine Louis. And this is her design, and I apologize for putting it together, but she brought it to us on paper, so we had to kind of, do you want to turn it around? Or bring it? And I also have a little printout of her reason for the design, and the top is kind of inside. And then the second student, and her name is Isabel Solano, and the second student, how do you do this? Well, that's the end of that.
There you go, you can take it.
I need your help with this. I need to go back to the second one, second one. Yep. The next one was by a Cappuccino student, and the box is located on the sidewalk near Ludeman Lane and El Camino Real, and her box is being passed around. So the deadline was, the deadline was February 20th of last year, and then the recommendation for the first two boxes for approval was on March 12th. And so the first round of utility boxes have been completed. Sorry. And so then, in October, we had a second round of utility boxes, and the second round was brought to the city for approval, is bringing, is here for approval for the city today. And then we're going to have, probably we'll have, the utility boxes will be completed the second round in the spring, and then we have one more box to be done, which is going to be submitted, the artwork is going to be submitted by the seniors, and we haven't had a date for that yet, but that is the last box. Yeah, it'll be sometime in the spring. So what are the next steps? We really would like to get the approval of the city council for the design choices.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Lee.
First of all, I'd like to thank the art commissions for the work you've done. It's very, very impressed, and very, very grateful, because we're really, art starved here in Millbrae, as far as I'm concerned. I think art provides, should be provocative, it should be making people think, it should engage people, and it should be unique, and hopefully, hopefully it'll reflect the diversity of our city as well. So I'm looking for, forward to your creativity. And again, I'm hoping that, other than our schools, other citizens will be allowed to do some artwork along Millbrae. And I'm not so sure why this council needs to approve it, because I'm, you know, obviously there's an art commission who has a lot more art, artist eyes than I have, so. But I do, I do appreciate the work you've done so far, and it's brought more meaningfulness to me as a citizen of Millbrae. So you're doing, you're a great, obviously, to me, you're doing great work. So I don't, I, as long as staff and, to me, as long as staff and the art commission are good with their selection, I'm happy that you are showing the art to us, but I don't think you need our approval.
Councilman Pappin?
Sorry, Councilmember Lee, yeah, we've been through this, we do have a public art policy, and it does need to come before the council for various reasons. These are beautiful. Thank you for your time and effort. I love them and looking forward to seeing them in public, and all the work you're doing, it's wonderful, because the ordinance is that way, because sometimes people may not agree in general, and then it would fall on the council to accept responsibility for all that. But thank you so much, and look forward to many more projects like this. So I would like to vote approval.
Vice Mayor Schneider?
Again, I think it's amazing, and I know how hard our commissioners, committee members have been working on that. So thank you, and thank you to the young artists. There were other submissions, they were all lovely, but there was only one box. This is the, well, there's one more. Once the senior position goes through, then the pilot project will end, and they'll, the committee will have an idea of what it costs, how much effort and things like that for it to roll out. So Councilman Lee, where you were asking about other artist ability, that would be the next phase. And I can tell you that the city, and because PG&E had a First Amendment concern, they took away the ability to paint any PG&E boxes. So you go to other cities, they got in before PG&E changed their minds. Basically, and I, we offered PG&E, you could choose the art themselves, you know, if they're so worried about something being inappropriate, but we haven't gotten them to budge yet. But we'll keep working on that. But that will be coming. But the boxes at the end of Millbrae Avenue, right where the airport put up their new hotel sign on Millbrae property, that sign could be moved, and there's some lovely utility boxes that would be maybe a good first stab at a professional artist at that location.
I'm thinking, well, I think you already had an idea for, and pushing the idea of having wall murals around the city. I know they do that in Chinatown, and it's really brought, brought some, it brought some live visibility to Chinatown.
And that's actually on their work plan that we approved in November or December. We approved that. But it's on their list.
They're
Yep. We've got a few projects on our list.
Those are mostly on private properties.
But there's a work, we talked about that at the last Culture Arts meeting, that one way San Bruno may have handled that is that they actually have the muralist put it on a canvas, and then the canvas is attached to the wall. So if you go down San Mateo Avenue in San Bruno, they've got a pocket park in the middle of this, of the block there, and it's got three different pieces of art on the wall. So that's one way of getting around the use of public monies on a private wall. So there's some, again, some, some issues to still work out, but you guys are doing great.
All right. Thank you very much.
For your support.
All right. So we have a motion from Councilwoman Pappin and a second from Councilman Lee. Your votes, please.
And just in closing, when the artists start, you'll let us know like the last time, so we can come and see. Part of bringing public art back to a council meeting is so the public can see what's going on, and hopefully start smiling a little bit.
Item number eight passed with a vote of four to zero with Council
Item number eight, passed with a vote of four to zero, with Councilmember Oliva excused.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number nine, reaffirming the citywide position opposing Senate Bill 50 in authorizing submission of the mayor's opposition letter. And as you remember, we had a discussion about this in the spring of 2019, and the bill died at that time, but never really died. It has come back to life, and there were some amendments that were made, January 6th of 2020, that attempted to ease some of the city concerns, but in crafting these amendments, we feel that there are a number of questions that have been raised and have not been answered. And the bill, I think, has a deadline of this Friday, and it may be voted on as soon as tomorrow, from what I've heard. City manager, do you have any additional staff report or?
No, I mean, I think that this is, you know, the opposition to SB 50, it's detailed in the attached letter. We also attached the League of California Cities Letter of Opposition. If approved this evening, we will submit it through the League of Cities portal first thing, and email it to all of the state legislatures via email. If there's any technical questions, I mean, it's just the same thing, continues to, you know, usurp due process, takes away the transparency of the development process by eliminating local land use and development regulations, public hearings, and public input for land development projects. It basically takes the state of California and turns minimum zoning into four units, you know, per parcel, so kind of same thing that we had discussed, and if there are any technical questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, Councilman Pappen.
I'd like to thank the mayor and staff for preparing this letter, and I do think that the letter points out very significant issues that currently exist with this legislation, and we have previously tried to work with the author to seek amendments, and I know the Council of Cities and a lot of people have, they're just not accepting the amendments. And one of the primary issues in the legislation is that it's inequitable, it does not treat all counties or jurisdictions the same. And if they are truly committed to housing, everybody should be treated equally. And in addition to that, Millbrae, in its unique way, has very significant transit issues that we have tried to enhance throughout in any developments that we do, but it actually deters people from taking transit in some jurisdictions. So I think I really compliment the mayor for putting this together in such detail, and really pointing out the issues that we have, that we would have hoped would have been cured, but have not. And we want to note, too, Millbrae has approved 844 housing units. We are doing a lot in that realm, and will continue to do so within the plans that we have established here. So this will be a part of the record for people to see, and I would recommend we carefully make sure that the chairman of the housing committees get this, the governor gets it too, and a few others, that our message is clearly being presented here, because we're not trying to avoid our obligations, but we are trying to be very respectful and work with our legislators, this just was not possible. So thank you again, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your doing this. Move approval.
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, the amendments, for those not familiar, that were made to the bill attempted to create what's called a local accountability plan, which would allow cities to come up with their own plan of how they would comply. And if they do that, and if the plan is approved by a state agency, the overriding provisions of the bill would no longer apply. Unfortunately, the legislation did not make any clear standards for what, you know, what would be acceptable in a local accountability plan. And, you know, it takes the power out of, even out of the legislature, and puts it in the Housing and Community Development Department at the state level. And unfortunately, we, you know, we cannot, personally, I can't accept that at this time, that, you know, it's saying that we have to come up with a plan without any, any clear standards or guidelines as to what would be acceptable. Okay, we do have a speaker slip on the, oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Schneider.
And I thank you for the letter. I know I had been trying to keep an open mind on SB 50, but my frustration over transportation agencies' control over what's happening with TOD 1 and Site 1 really frustrates me, and I didn't see anything in any of the documentation that talks, let me rephrase, it puts all the pressure on cities and ignores that transportation agencies can be extremely destructive to existing housing and any new housing. And I think if Senator Weiner is really positive about trying to buy, to build housing, he should get the transportation agencies on the hook too, because what they're doing to Millbrae is unforgivable. I don't care if it's in old language or new language, they are stopping housing, and they're costing our city time for that, and it's just not acceptable on that. So, you know, I spoke to Senator Weiner back in December, specifically on our TOD 1 project, and said, "Come on down, come learn what's going on here," and it's like going in one ear and out the other. So it's very frustrating.
It's been a frustrating process. Yeah, one other comment is that the bill has no, really no funding mechanisms for infrastructure and for, you know, services that cities would have to provide. So, yeah, I think we would be happy to accommodate increased housing, we're looking to do that through the Reno process and updating our housing element, but unfortunately, having such, you know, broad mandates without any type of infrastructure or transportation funding to accommodate a growing population is not acceptable. Councilman Lee?
Yeah, again, I thank the mayor and staff for putting this letter together, and particularly the leadership of the mayor for putting, getting this letter out. I did put out a similar letter, and I would like to see, actually, if we can, before we send it out, more discussion about affordable housing, strongly saying that it's lacking, and the whole idea of building housing is to provide housing, and if we're not building affordable housing, we're not providing housing.
That's a good point, yeah, yeah, I think, I think we're on a time.
I know we're on a time, but I think it's important enough to add that, and also maybe emphasize the fact that without, without, without good consideration of what the, every city should be treated with equality, because all the cities are different, as Councilman Pappen said, and the need, building housing can actually bankrupt a city if it's not done correctly. Like, they're not required, if the developers aren't building retail or a way to pay for the amenities that are required, for instance, this city's going to have to come up with $1.5 million to accommodate all the salaries that we, all the firemen and policemen we have to hire, because we have to have another fire truck, and we have to have another shift. You know, that could bankrupt a city who doesn't have the means. So somewhere along, it has to be said that due consideration of how, there should be some sort of analysis done also, and making developers answer those questions as well. I mean, and, but, we shouldn't say that, we also want to emphasize, we want to build, when they build houses, they should build houses with some sort of analysis, saying what the economic impacts are going to be.
Yeah, good points, and good point about the affordability component as well, because, you know, it's really sort of a trickle-down economics type of argument, that, you know, if you build all these housing units at, you know, 3,000, 3,500 a month for a studio, that it'll make existing housing cheaper. And it's, you know, I have a hard time believing those arguments, I think if anything, it has a very minimal impact on affordability, so.
I was just at dinner the other day, I met this Apple guy who worked at Apple, and he's from Australia, and I asked him, "So, how long can he be working for Apple?" "Well, as long as they keep making money." He's getting half a million dollars a year. How can you possibly afford a house, to get a house, and compete with a guy getting half a million dollars a year?
And I think, I think we have to continue to, you know, we would like to increase housing supply and make sure that we include affordable units in any development that's improved in Millbrae. I think we need a citywide inclusionary housing ordinance, which I was surprised to recently learn we do not have. So, you know, something to think about for the goal-setting next week.
Can we share this with C-CAG?
Sure, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, if we could share this with C-CAG and one other group, oh, yeah, if you could send it to MTC as well.
A-BAG.
A-BAG and MTC as well, thank you.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
I'm not sure if it goes into goal-setting, but if we, if we're going to, if Millbrae's going to become a little proactive, maybe it's time that we start sharing where we are unique. We, when you talk about a fourplex coming into a single-family neighborhood, with all the cars that we get, with Uber and Lyft drivers overnighting in our streets, we, not every city has Uber and Lyft drivers, it's because of our proximity to SFO that we have conditions that other cities don't have. And I am generally all for affordable housing and housing improvements, but I think we should really be looking at ghost housing, too. We are a city that has, could have significant number of ghost housing. Those are houses people buy and then leave them empty. And the province of British Columbia has passed a law that is trying to disencourage people buying houses, parking money from some other country and leaving them vacant. What they're calling it, because I have lots of family in Canada, they call it the College Student Housing Act, because a lot of these absentee owners are putting a college student in there. Well, that's okay, college students need housing, so if that works, it works. But I think we should, having a vacant house in your neighborhood doesn't help your neighborhood. So there's multiple reasons for looking at ghost housing, too.
Yeah, and building, you know, a fourplex on a single-family lot, you know, 10 miles from the nearest transit station, doesn't help to encourage transit ridership.
Exactly, so.
Okay, we do have a speaker slip on this item, Stephen Green.
Good evening, members of the City Council. First, I'd like to address some concerns I have about the letter of opposition as written. First of all, the section detailing your opposition to the legalization of fourplexes casts as a nightmare scenario, single-family homes being converted to house for families, not because you have concerns about the families living there, but because you have concerns about parking. This is in keeping with a city that views storage for cars as more important than homes for families, which I hope does not describe us. Your worry about making the dream of homeownership unattainable is couched in the perception that a detached, single-family home is the only type of home that anyone would ever want. Second, the section about fiscal impacts seems like a strange one to make in the face of the ludicrous water bills in the city that are right now levied on a per-household basis to offset the costs of infrastructure repair. I will point out the obvious, that these costs would be lower if the city had more households. Similarly, new residents pay new taxes, sales taxes most importantly, on top of increased property taxes triggered by reassessments due to redevelopment. It is strange, then, that you contrasted residential development with revenue-generating development. I don't expect to be able to change your minds or how you are about to vote, but assuming that SB 50 does not pass, I'm expecting big things from the forthcoming general plan, based on the language I'm seeing in the list in the letter of opposition. If Millbrae thinks they can do better, they have yet to prove it. Look no further than the empty lot that has seen no development despite 15 years it has spent immediately next door to our large intermodal station. Look no further than the city's bizarre parking requirements despite the proximity of that same station. Uses that require no parking in the downtown improvement area confusingly require exorbitant amounts a block away from BART. Or look at the height limits and parking requirements that exist in spite of already-built and imminently-functional examples. My existing six-unit building, where it built today, for example, would require 33% more parking, most likely a geometric impossibility on its lot. This is all to say nothing of the outright ban on multifamily housing the city is still trying to preserve in over 70% of its land, in the midst of the most severe housing shortage this country has likely ever seen. This type of zoning is not what got us our lovely downtown. Millbrae has gone backwards rather than forwards in the density and types of construction it allows. As you vote to condemn SB 50, I hope you do so with the renewed resolve to put your money where your mouths are, and create an intelligent and tailored plan that allows Millbrae to grow and thrive. The pressure on all of us is building, and the longer we delay, the more certain and even more drastic response from Sacramento becomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green, I think you made a lot of good points, and we will look to address that through our general plan update.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
Mr. Green, I appreciate your points, however, and I did sit down with a number of young housing advocates a week ago about this. The reality is, is we approved 444 to 488 housing units, and high-speed rail and Caltrain put a stop to it. That's not our power. I would love to see the housing advocates get out there and talk to the transportation agencies. This land that Caltrain is fighting over isn't big enough for them to build housing, and in fact, their business plan says that the two places they're going to build housing are in Mountain View and, I can't remember the other train station, but it was not ours. So instead, they've held, they've delayed a process by seven months, and if you talk to the developer who wants to build those projects that we approved, that we approved 10-story buildings, that is unlike any city other than South San Francisco in this county. So I hear what you're saying, I understand your frustration, but we have done our part, and will continue to do our part on El Camino Real. You can, I took the same housing advocates and said, "Look, we have the widest width of El Camino. You want to work on housing in Millbrae? Work on Caltrain, on narrowing El Camino Real, so that we can turn some unproductive asphalt into something that can bring us both economic development and housing. But do not knock us for an ordinance that would say that you can put..." And then let's talk about fourplexes in single-family neighborhoods. We're already approving ADUs designed specifically for each neighborhood, so already right there, we're going into a higher density, and in fact, we have in most neighborhoods duplexes already in existence. So maybe Millbrae needs to do a better job of making sure everybody knows just what we've already got, before anybody points fingers at us for not doing things.
Yes, Councilman Pappen.
Yeah, and to clear the record here, the only height limits we have in Millbrae relate to the airport, not Millbrae. We are building 10 stories high, so, and it is a progression in the general plan as to other areas of the city here. Your allegations as to 15 years, 15 years ago, nobody wanted to build there. This development, both 1 and 2, have astronomically accelerated beyond anybody else's developments at an intermodal center, probably too quickly, as we are discovering some of the issues that are coming forward here. But those projects progressed, I think it's only been five years as to when they were proposed. So, again, we appreciate the passion a lot of people have here, but we need to get the facts straight, that we are proceeding along the lines, trying to find a balance that will, as the mayor's letter points out, sustain Millbrae and also help Millbrae grow. So we are hopeful that these 844 units will come to reality, and we have other ones in the pipeline right now along El Camino, so we look forward to all those happening. But we would like to keep the facts straight, thank you.
And I think we also have capacity concerns with our water and our sewer infrastructure. It's simply not, we simply don't have the capacity to, for an 80,000-population city or whatever Millbrae could be under SB 50. Obviously, it wouldn't happen all at once, but we do have limitations from Bosque for water supply, and we do have our own treatment plant, which would require, you know, massive upgrades if our city were to be, you know, 40,000, 50,000, 60,000 people in the next 20 years, or whatever it would be.
Councilman Lee?
Yeah, and I appreciate your comment about the water rates, it is high, and adding more people, yeah, will lower, maybe not going to lower the price of water as much, it will a little bit, but I'm more concerned with the existing, the existing residents who are living on fixed income, and raising taxes on them and keeping, raising taxes on certain, on residents will drive those people out. I know that was part of your goal, when your ideas was to drive out existing residents so that you can have, raise the property taxes, but that's not acceptable for people who've lived here and call this their home. So that's not, that's not a solution. So the solution is to make, make the dollars work efficiently, and you've, just building housing, it's not, it's not going to solve the problem. You solve one problem, you create another. You create a huge deficit for all the people here who cannot be, can only be taxed so much, and they can't afford it anymore. And you think that's okay, but you might be making half a million dollars, I mean, half a million dollars a year, but not everybody else here is making half a million dollars a year. So you can only tax the residents so much, you have to have a balanced approach in the city. And citizens shouldn't be, have to be taxed over and over again, having to pay high water rates, have to pay more parcel tax, have to pay more bond measures. We need to make the city work for us, we need to make a commercial base that works for us. And who doesn't want to have a place to go shop anyway, or go eat? So that's all part of the fabric of this, of all cities, you have to have, you have to have a balance. And we're not saying not build housing, we said build housing, but also build housing with the amenities. You don't want to just have just housing here, and where you're going to, you're going to just have people come here, and then they're going to leave. We already have an 80% leakage rate. We already have an 80% leakage rate, which means that most people don't shop in the city of Millbrae, they shop elsewhere.
All right, thank you, Councilman Lee. Okay, I think we've discussed this enough. We have a motion from Councilman Papen and a second from Vice Mayor Snyder. Your votes, please.
Item number nine passed with a vote of four to zero with Councilmember Oliva excused.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is item number 10, an informational update on the Millbrae Recreation Center restoration project.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Jane Cow with the Public Works Department.
Jane, if, can I, real quick, interrupt here? So kind of the reorganization of the city's gotten ahead of me a little bit when working with staff, but I would like to introduce Jane. She is, is now our acting Public Works Director. So if you don't know Jane or you've seen her, please welcome her as Acting Public Works Director under the tutelage of Key Lim, who will be taking over the interim roles for Community Development Director as Brad Meisner has left. I will provide a memo to the City Council of what we're doing and how we're doing it, but Jane is very, very capable, since I've been on board, and I'm just very happy to provide her with the opportunity to step up in the leadership role here at the city. So Jane, welcome as our interim Public Works Director.
Thank you, everybody. So tonight, I'm here to give a monthly update for the Millbrae Recreation Center project. So last time we came to council was November 14th, and the council awarded a professional service agreement to Swinerton Management and Consulting Firm for project management and construction management. So since then, staff has been working with Swinerton as well as the city's attorney's office to transition from the design-build process to, pardon me, design-bid-build process to the design-bid process. Along the way, we are working on the request for qualifications, which we hope to shortlist three design builders, and then request for proposal, which is the contract document which will be issued to the three shortlisted design builder. And we have been confirming project scope and budget. This is where we looked at cost savings opportunities and, as well as the project labor agreement, and this is all to help maintain the $30 million total budget. So schedule and next step. Next step will be the pre-qualification process. We are scheduled to issue the RFQ next week, and the process will take about four weeks, and we hope to have the shortlisted firms selected by March. And then the next step is the proposal stage. We would like to issue the request for proposal in April, and that will be a 12, roughly 12 weeks' process, and have a design builder selected by June. With that, we will come back to council in July and award the contract to the design-build entity. With that, we can kick off construction documents and construction, which will last 18 months and will commence December 20, 21st, with soft opening and moving in by March 2022. And then staff would like to give a monthly update at the second meeting of each month as consent item, and we're happy to pull that off and do a new business, or existing business item for discussion on the major updates. Any questions?
Yes, Vice Mayor Snyder.
Okay, my philosophy on consent calendar is, I think the public is really desperate in getting more information about the Rec Center. When we put things on consent calendar, I know we can pull it off, I know the public can pull it off, but I think it would be better to have it as a standing item in existing business. I think it's well worth it, and it's, it's to our advantage to keep everybody well informed, just like the TODs.
If that's council's preference, we can certainly do that on, on slow months, or you can certainly take the item and place it on consent, so if it's at the concurrence of the council, we'll keep it on the existing business calendar. We have no problem with that, as staff, we're just trying to be efficient and not repetitive.
I think the balance is efficiency and transparency.
Yeah.
And also having the public trust us. So if we think that one of the reasons the measure failed when we went to the bond was they didn't trust us, we're still trying to, we've done major steps in the last year and a half in that, but we trust.
Is there a request, once a month, to have it on?
Once a month, because I was confused. I thought we'd already gotten the short, we got the RFQ back. So I'm confused myself, and I have better access than the public does. So we're just going out to get the RFQ, to get the list, to get the three, so I'm already confused. I'm not really confused.
Well, no, so the RFQ, no, we're on schedule, so the RFQ, we're reviewing, and it will be released per the schedule, so that schedule's held. Our, our purpose is, is exactly what you said, have a monthly update on the council calendar that we can discuss and communicate what's happening on a monthly basis, the status of the project. We'd be happy to keep that on existing business, no problem.
Yes, Councilwoman Papen.
Thank you. I think we all agree transparency is very important. Might I suggest, too, that our recreation bulletin has some sort of a timeline in there that people could follow, just a corner section in case people are not, people have more interesting things to watch on TV Tuesday nights and may not be watching us. And just keeping our website up to date would be very helpful, along those lines. And, and I think, too, maybe even sharing our information with the school district, because they have a population that's very interested in this as well. So I think that would be great in keeping everybody informed. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestions.
Yes, Vice Mayor Snyder.
Again, I don't sit on this council subcommittee, so I have less information. I'm really happy that we're getting closer and that maybe we'll be breaking ground this summer, but I am concerned that we haven't identified the FF and E costs that the community or various community groups might be able to help support, but they're gonna need some long-range planning. So for example, if the lions were, and I'm not committing the Millbrae Lions, but I am a Millbrae Lion, and the first thing the lion said to me after the fire was, "Please build a cooking, a good kitchen," was the very first thing, how many lions came to me, but that's very expensive. And let's say it's 50,000 or more, they don't raise that much money, we don't raise that much money in a year. So if that expectation is sitting out there, it's gonna take community groups a while to get there. If we want all of the various teenage youth, the tweens and the teens, to fund the FF and E for the teen room, they need to have a target to start saving money for. As an advisor to the Millbrae Leos, they've got maybe $5,000 at any one given point, but they give a lot of that to Mills High School. So they need to know that in two years' time, they want a foosball table and a ping-pong table. You know, I actually talked to them at Martin Luther King Day, and they gave me a whole shopping list of what they'd like to see, but they need to know what those costs are so they can begin budgeting, even if it's two years out. And that's what I'd like to see.
Can, to follow up on that, I know there were a number of things in our budget, items in our budget for the Rec Center, and obviously, the, the bridge loan from the county is probably the key to getting this going. But I know there were a couple of parcels that we had identified as surplus property where, maybe we should wait, if SB 50 gets approved, then those would be a lot more valuable as they could be fourplexes. But what's the status on, on that process and the other pieces of the funding puzzle coming together?
So in terms of surplus property, we had two properties that we surplus. We received information back from the high school district, so we need to sit down with the high school district and discuss, you know, their desire to purchase the property. Once we exhaust that, then we can move forward. We're working on an RFP to solicit a real estate broker for us. So that process, I'll have to check with Community Development, should be coming out within the next month or two. Some of this is, some of this, quite frankly, has been delayed because of the fact that, you know, we were looking at a $43 million, $45 million recreation center. And so now that we're getting reality to the building and working with Swinerton and the RFQ and the RFP, we will know more about what we can do within the $30 million budget. Once it becomes real, then we plan on being very aggressive in our fundraising for FF and E and augmenting our, our finances with the sale of the property. But till we can get a handle on reality, which we are now, there was really no use in going out to try to solicit funds and fundraising and money for what, in essence, people would think of as a phantom project, that, you know, are you ever gonna build it? So I hope that answers your question, so.
Understood, yeah.
Okay. So we will aggressively, in the next probably three to four months, start on that path again.
Doesn't interrupt the timeline in, in any way.
Yeah, no, it will not, yeah.
All right, and, and I think you also had mentioned, maybe this is in the mayor's sitting recording in council meeting or at another point, that we have actually received the development impact fees from TOD 2.
That is correct. So part of the development impact fees that would go towards this, we received a check for a little over $16 million in development impact fees through the fees negotiated in the development agreement. So that revenue is, is actually in the city's hands now.
Great, okay, thank you.
Looking positive.
All right. You know, this is only an informational item, so we do not need to take a vote on this. If there are no other questions, we will move on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay. Next, we have council comments, so maybe we can begin with Councilman Lee.
So MTC and A BAGs kind of have, I don't, what do you call it, retreats? I don't know what you call them.
Workshops.
Workshops, yeah, all-day workshops on Thursday, MCTV, MCT, MTC, and then MTC and A BAG, because MTC needs extra, they need extra time to get their act together, so. So one, important, the important issue right now is the Bay Area, the Bay Area Plan, what are they called again? Bay.
Bay Area.
And Bay Area, 2050, 2050. Yeah, they call it 2050. And so they're gonna go around again and talk to the other cities and have workshops. And then RENA, which is the regional housing allocations, meaning that's the amount of housing that each city is, should be committed to building, is that, that process is starting again, so that's a very important process. Again, and also, this Saturday is the San Francisco Chinese New Year Parade, and Mills' Dragon Team will be in that parade. They did a preview at this last Sunday. They were, they were fantastic, these kids, they build their own lion head. Last year, they got the, an exceptional award, which is very prestigious, and I'm hoping, and so, again, thanks staff and all of the Millbrae Culture Committee and all of the participants, and, and thank you to the sheriffs and the fire and, and everybody who participated. And it was about, I'd say about all total, about 4,000 people, maybe conservatively, and during the parade, maybe about 23, 2,200 people, which is much bigger than the past we've ever had, so. And thanks to our city manager, we started off with a bang, so, literally. And so I think next year, and we did order sunshine, and we got sunshine, so that was very nice. Thank you to the City Council for your support, and I hope that their, this festival will continue to be a regional festival. And the Lions Club also had, their crab feed was successful. Thank you again to everybody who participated in that, and all that money goes towards the community, and that's it for now.
Councilwoman Papen. Okay. Vice Mayor Snyder.
January has started out with a bang, so I was the city representative to Peninsula Clean Energy Strategic Retreat, and, you know, they're doing really well. 97% of the San Mateo customers are signed up for PCE's energy program. And then I was in a marketing breakout group where they want to spend money to, and Councilman Lee, I don't know what happened at PCE last week, I know there was a big discussion of nuclear energy, but they want to spend money because the public can't tell the difference between PCE and PG&E. I kind of spoke up and said, "I don't think that's the best use of our funds when we have many Public Works buildings throughout the county that don't have solar." There are many other ways to do that. Another discussion was the, the rebates that they give for electric vehicles, yay, that's great, but is that really getting to people who wouldn't otherwise buy an electric vehicle, or is it helping people who have got plenty of money and they're just getting their electric vehicle a little bit cheaper? There was a long discussion about, some people, they are thinking that people change their cars out every six years or so. I gotta say, I just got rid of an 18-year-old car, and I'm trying to get rid of a 24-year-old car, so I'm not sure about the eight years. But PCE is doing, doing very well, and they are keeping their eye out on what's happening with PG&E and to buy out or not to buy out PG&E. And Wayne, I know they had a very busy meeting last week. For everybody in Millbrae, Ground Based Noise Meeting this coming Thursday, 9:30 at the Recreation Center. We had three different studies come in over the holidays, the winter holidays, dealing with vegetation as a sound absorption medium, as beginning to try to get a grasp on contours that would be based on low-frequency noise instead of the current high-frequency airplanes and flight noise. So this Thursday's meeting should be very interesting. So if you're there at 9:30, it is not televised. Sadly, there isn't the funding for that, but I'll be taking notes, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact me. I attended the League of California Cities Conference, it's the training for new council members and mayors. There was quite a bit of discussion on transparency, and like every time we go out, a big discussion on housing and SB 50, so we've already dealt with that. I also attended, last Friday, elected officials and staff were invited to San Mateo County's transportation agency's very first update of transportation issues in the county, and they talked about bus service, the new electric buses, there are eight of them, or there's four of them now, it'll be growing by an additional eight, they're still testing them. One good thing about electric vehicles is they're much quieter, so that reduces your ambient noise level that then people like the airport put their noise on top of. So reducing noise in all forms is actually good for other reasons than just carbon. I asked him, I asked Mr. Hartnett, who is the executive director or CEO, about seamless transportation, since Millbrae had just approved it at the previous council, and he said, "It's, no, seamless transportation, the only way we're gonna get it is if we get more money and we can increase the frequency of our trains, so that if they get into the BART station at Millbrae late, they can always just, you know, there'll be another train, there'll be another BART on that." So that was a little disappointing, not unexpected. The reason they did that is the governor has signed a bill, and I think it's 795, but don't quote me on the number, and it's to put a 0.8 or 1/8 sales tax on the ballot. They're hoping for November. There's some conflict with the one that Councilwoman Papen mentioned earlier that would be region-wide, that would, that the seamless transportation people talked about. So only one can be on the ballot, apparently, but if this one goes forward, that's where they think they're gonna get their funding for things like seamless transportation, and without it, I don't think we're gonna be seeing it anytime soon. We also had our quarterly emergency services council. This meeting included having the air quality management board there. It's taken almost a year to get staff from the air board to come to emergency services and talk about smoke that basically built up over all of our communities. I can't speak for everybody in Millbrae, but I could barely see across the street during the campfire. One of the things that they have done, and they've done it statewide, so there is a statewide set of warning colors and warning advice. This one, and what they mainly spoke with was how to make schools safer. One of the good news about a current bill that's been passed is schools will have grant funding to buy new, better filters for their air conditioning systems at their schools. So if we have another one of those really bad particulate days, sheltering in place, sheltering in schools, there isn't money for everything else, and it can't be done universally because each school's HVAC system is different. But they have other wood smoke tips on this. I asked about what happens with our public works, with our first responders, and they said, "Oh, there is work on the way for that, trying to standardize it statewide," with FEMA's input, too, so maybe there's a little bit of national standardization, but to start getting this information out about how to protect yourself in bad air days. And a bit of a discussion about power shutdowns and the costs and the plans for having a power shutdown plan for anybody here in Millbrae who is on medical devices, so if we can bump that up in our emergency services. So if we can bump that up in our emergency services. The other really kind of exciting thing there, we've been waiting quite a while, is CalFire rolled out their brand new evacuation plans and it's countywide, it's probably statewide at this point. And it takes into account, let's look at Meadows. Meadows being our higher risk area, contrary to my thinking along Millbrae Avenue. It's mainly because of proximity to wildlands. If Meadows has to be evacuated and it has to be evacuated through the Meadow Glen neighborhood, which is down here by Lower Helen Drive, how they can sequence evacuation depending on different roads. So that's actually really exciting. I don't know what the next step might be. I don't think they're quite ready to do a city by city demonstration, but as we start working on wildland fire prevention activities, this would be something to have them get there. But it's, it's actually really cool. I brought up the fact that we are a pass through or a cut through city, so it isn't just evacuating our own people, but in an emergency, people start driving like they're just one, one thought in mind, how do I get home? And if they're cutting through all of our neighborhoods while we're trying to evacuate neighborhoods, that's something they have to add into this model. So with that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Pappan? I have gifts. I have progress reports.
Okay.
City manager, I have one for staff. I also attended Caltrain, who told me today, well, you know, through Grand Boulevard, Millbrae could have had one of these projects too, but Burlingame has this project that includes a portion of Millbrae. And it's just something for us to keep an eye on. I'll put one in. And I brought a couple for staff too, about these projects. Basically, their staff there said, well, Millbrae, if you want to do a Grand Boulevard planning, contact us. So we do have some contact information. Oh, bike pedestrian, I had been to a lot of meetings. County Bike Pedestrian, they gave an update of safe routes to schools. Millbrae does not qualify for the funding for it. Although, if we can work with the school district with Lamita Park, and I think you're on the school subcommittee?
No.
Oh, whoever's on the school subcommittee, we get discounted because we make too much money here. And we, we miss out on a lot of grants because of that. And that's a long-term thing that I think Millbrae needs to look at and speak up about. But Lamita Park has students from San Bruno and Millbrae and is possible, our one area that we could do a safe routes to school walk and other things like that. There hasn't been a safe routes to school walk audit since 2013, so it's been quite a while and I have no idea. I've got requests out to get the reports from those audits. Basically, do we have things on the sidewalk that are preventing people from being seen correctly? Are plants grown in the wrong place so kids can't be seen, et cetera, et cetera. And I would love to have the city of Millbrae actually have a walk audit to our schools, but we don't get the assistance of the funding.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Pappan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And along the lines of the Caltrain Burlingame program, the trees on Burlingame side of El Camino have become just an overall health hazard, falling down and possibly killing people. So they've gotten some money from their, they get a lot of money from those hotels. So they've been required to get a plan to replace all the trees and improve the streets there. So, but we hope to work with them further on that one. I understand the school district meeting, the school district is finally looking at, if you rent their facilities, that you may be able to serve alcohol. It is still a work in progress. Until that time, PTA members will carry their solo cups with whatever inside. We're hoping that the school district will take advantage of state regulations which protect them and they will expand their rules to allow the PTAs to fully fund their events and take advantage of those. As was stated earlier, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission has a workshop Thursday and Friday to discuss the seamless aspects, among other things, and how the planned 2050 will be shaped. And hopefully, we can skew that in a different way to include many things that would benefit San Mateo County, including the Dumbarton Rail Corridor. Managed lanes is moving ahead and we will be impacted by those. That is adding lanes to 101. Not taking away, but adding managed lanes, which will involve the Clipper Card, and we have a long way to go on that. But the funding for that is progressing. It's going to be a nightmare in the development, but hopefully, they will improve 101, so less potholes as it progresses. Caltrain, as I said before, their business plan looks like it's going to be, receive some funding from the transportation agency as well as the Sam Trans Express Bus through El Camino. So all of our cities are going to be put on alert as to that's coming our way. We have several council members here working on making BART accountable as far as serving our community. They, as everyone knows, crime is up, it's unsafe, and it's also unhealthy. They had this week, or just last week, cleaned all the BART stations in San Mateo County, five of them. And once again, they are dirty and disgusting. So unless we get a plan to have regular cleaning and also improved public safety there, it is still very much a problem. I voted no on $35 million of discretionary money going to BART with no strings attached. I thought it should go to Caltrain and we'll continue the fight to make them accountable. We did receive a study from UCLA regarding why people take transit and why they don't take transit and why the numbers are down. Number one, no questions asked. If you don't feel safe on public transportation, you will not take it. So there needs to be a reality check as far as that transit provider. Also, a big aspect to the seamless, as was pointing out by Vice Mayor Schneider here, coordination between agencies. They've been talking about it for decades and decades. They do nothing about it. So trying to get, working with our city manager and trying to get MTC, the Transportation Commission, to expand on a resolution they have regarding coordination and then also bringing that to the state legislature to force transit agencies to show us the results instead of just talking around each other and throwing money at them. There was also an article in the paper, San Francisco paper accusing Sam Trans of dumping homeless people in San Francisco. To be clear, the individuals in question are being forced off the BART train at night, either in Millbrae or at the airport. The airport has decided, the airport, which is San Francisco's jurisdiction, owned and operated by the city and county of San Francisco, gives them bus tokens to return them to San Francisco. We do not do that here and we are trying to help as many people as we possibly can. I will point out too, there's a LA Times article recently that the majority of homeless people in any jurisdiction are local. So the actions that jurisdictions take, whether we take it here in Millbrae, to provide affordable housing units, trying not to displace people, other jurisdictions are not doing the same. San Francisco has 70,000 units coming online, none of which are affordable. So we realize the numbers are bigger in jurisdictions, but if you survey them, they are from San Francisco. And it becomes a local problem as well as a regional problem. I will say that I had a special meeting with Bank of America, which was interesting. They are working with other credit card agencies to try to do a contactless bank acceptance card for transportation, which would mean you could use your phone to ride Sam Trans, Caltrain, or BART. So the convenience of that has shown in New York, London now, that it is very convenient for people and they're more likely to, they don't want to fumble with money to get tickets. We hope that that will be pursued here locally, that you could just use your phone or something to get your tickets and ride on public transportation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just very briefly.
At the Burlingame event tonight, I was speaking with High Speed Rail or Managed Lane staff. They are going to be removing more vegetation in Millbrae, which means greater noise impact from the airport.
Well, let's talk offline because if there's any project like that and there's an environmental review, they're obligated to replant and mitigate.
They claim there isn't a big enough ride away.
Well, we're open for business and we're willing to partner with anybody. So some of the stuff that I've heard tonight, I think we, we should probably talk about it, our goal setting or have a strategy behind it because just throwing more money at something and saying that's excuses. And Millbrae, as small as we are, we do have the largest. We, we analyze, we are the only station that is actually multimodal. So it comes with problems and we're looking for partners.
Councilman Lee, very quickly.
Yeah, I just want to respond to Vice Mayor Schneider's remarks about the PCE and using nuclear power. PCE has always promised that they would, their goal is to go towards zero greenhouse gas emissions. And we spent, we don't spend our money, even though we don't spend our money on nuclear energy, PCE has been offered by PG&E to pay $5.3 million for the rights to say that we don't buy nuclear energy. So it seems like a waste of $5.3 million better spent on energy saving programs than to have to just pay for marketing rights to say that we don't buy nuclear power, which we don't. So that's what we decided not to, we decided not to be, I guess, forced to do, spend $5.3 million to give to PG&E. And then also one big announcement, Vaughn Vaperstet has announced his retirement, well, not retirement, he's resigning, you know, of the school board. He's the superintendent of the Millbrae School Board and he's planning to resign by the end of this year, school year.
Didn't know about that. Well, congratulations to Superintendent Vaperstet and I look forward to hearing more about that. Okay. Last week, I attended the Caltrain Local Policymakers Group meeting. There was a brief High Speed Rail discussion. They didn't get into any information about the Millbrae Station, but as was stated earlier, the EIR will be coming out in February, is anticipated in April. So it'd be a good opportunity for us to comment. They still have about a $50 billion funding gap that has not closed at all since the last time I asked last year. So they would like to see more federal funding, but it looks like that will not be the case under this administration. There also was a discussion about the Caltrain business plan and different types of scheduling modes. It was a little bit quite technical, but sort of a discussion about whether to prioritize more express service, like the Baby Bullet train or trains that stop at more stations. And, you know, I think it's important to have some type of a balance of both. The Baby Bullet trains are very popular now, they're usually completely full, so that I think shows that it is a successful program. But at the same time, there are a number of stations that get very infrequent service and hopefully, that will be improved through the electrification process. So I also attended these Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. We discussed some of the same grants that had been discussed here at our previous meeting. As was mentioned earlier, there will be a disc golf demo day this Saturday at 10:00 AM at Mosta Grove. They will be along this bird trail between Mosta Grove and the Mills baseball field in case you don't get there right at 10:00. But there had been discussion, I think in the previous commission meeting, and I believe in December, that the commissioners would like more public outreach before committing to this project. So they're doing so this weekend. Yeah, I'd also like to thank everyone that helped with the, once again, the Lunar New Year Parade. It was incredibly successful and overwhelming crowds. I'd like to thank Congresswoman Spear and Senator Hill from, for attending. Senator Hill presented us with this lovely commendation that we will keep in the council room. And look forward to building upon that in future years. Like to close in honor of Bob Richard, a former longtime Millbrae resident on Lamita Avenue. And I don't know if I should get into this, but the events this past weekend in, in the Los Angeles area with basketball legend Kobe Bryant and the, his daughter Gianna and the other seven victims of that crash, it just shows, you know, how, we don't know how, how long we're going to be here. And to do the most we can and the best we can in our possibly short time on this planet. And I'd like to thank my colleagues and our staff for all the work that we do to make Millbrae a better place than it was when we, when we got here. And that's what we all strive to do. So with that, we will close and adjourn and we will be back next Tuesday, February 4th, for the goal setting session. Thank you.
It's not televised, right?
No. No, okay. Goodnight.